I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Town of Atherton City Council. It's a study session slash special meeting tonight at 5:00 p.m. on August 7th, 2013. We have the three members of council here, Preston, and then our fourth member is going to call in from his work establishment in New Jersey. City manager, can you see if you can get him on the phone? His voice will come to us from up on the podium, from that speakerphone, so hopefully we'll be able to hear him, and I think he's going to be able to join us for the first three or four session items on the agenda. And then he has to go back to ...
Can verify if you all agree each other.
Right.
Hello, Widmer.
Mr. Widmer, thank you very much, Councilmember Widmer, for joining us. This is Mayor Lewis. We have Vice Mayor Wees and Councilmember Dobby here, and a room full of constituents and our full complement of staff. Thank you so much. So, I guess I just did roll call.
You did. Ken? So, Madam Mayor, I'll be able to hang on for the first two items, but then I need to get back to my contract negotiations, so...
Appreciate that. I'm wondering if you could hang on for one more minute so we could do the consent calendar, which is two items, and one of them is the one that we worked on together, the consent.
Okay.
Okay, and that should be just a motion and a second and approval. Does that, that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good, good, good. So, we did the roll call. Now's the time for public comment. We'll open the floor for public comment. It's open to anything on the agenda because this is a special meeting. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make that on the items on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Yes, Peter Carpenter. Two. One, I wanted to thank the council for your reconsideration, for agendizing, reconsideration of the parcel tax schedule this year. When big changes are made, like the increase for private clubs, i.e. the mental circus club, I think it's very important that timely notice be given, even though that probably isn't required by law, so that there's the opportunity for public comment. Otherwise, we run the risk of having lots of things being done in a meeting which the public has no idea are going to be considered. So, I do urge you to vote to reconsider it. And I don't have a particular review on what the schedule ought to be, but I do think that there should be the opportunity for public comment and public input, whatever the schedule is.
Thank you.
And I have one other comment, and then I won't have to come back again later. I would also urge you, as you begin your deliberations on the parcel tax arguments, to recognize the inconsistency of constantly saying that the most important thing in the city is police services, and then saying, "But we need a parcel tax for police services." If the most important thing is police services, we should be paying that out of our first-dollar property tax revenues. And the other things that are less important should be the things that are at the margin covered by parcel tax. And I realize that we've always done it the other way in the past, but it's just, it's logically inconsistent. It's what we used to call the Washington Monument Strategy in Washington. You say to the park service, "We're going to cut your budget," and they'll say, "Well, we're going to close the Washington Monument," rather than doing all the other things that they could do before they close the Washington Monument. End of my comments.
Thank you. Any other member of the public would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to our agenda. The actual items that we have before us is, first one is the proposed reconsideration of the actions taken at our last council meeting on July 17. I requested that this be brought back to council because I, like Peter, felt that we did not process, we did not follow a due diligence and thoughtful process in our deliberation before making that vote to increase one entity without having all the accurate information. I think that what we have in our agenda packet tonight, with all of the backup information that staff has provided for us, is critical information that we will need when we deliberate further in the future. So, I'll turn it over to the city managers just to explain the procedure for this reconsideration, and then we can move on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you articulated, part of the process says that the item has to be considered at the meeting on which it was originally considered, or the very next. This is the very next. So, we scheduled it for tonight's meeting for the council's decision as to whether they want to reconsider it or not. Staff included a lot more background information with respect to the historic parcel tax and its application to different parcels and parcel categories in the community for the council's discussion. Should they reconsider the issue? That concludes the staff report, basically. You provided a good overview.
Thank you. Okay. Any member of the public wish to comment on this reconsideration? Peter's already made his comments. Anyone else opening up for public? Bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Widmer, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here. I've got a few comments. We're council comments, it's difficult to hear.
It's your turn. We can hear you just fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my only comment was is that, as you know, Madam Mayor, and members of the public, you know, we had discussed and we had asked to discuss this thing, the parcel tax, so well with dance, and unfortunately, other pressing matters didn't allow us to do that, and so we more or less rushed things, and perhaps gave an error with not having the proper transparency, and as such, I think that, as I think many people have that said, that the public doesn't feel that this is improperly aired, and as such, I think we should reconsider it.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the council?
Well, I think we should reconsider it, too.
Good.
Backward.
Let's make a motion for reconsideration.
I'll make a motion if we reconsider this parcel tax item.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Widmer. Thank you. So, that motion passes, and we are going to reconsider the parcel tax vote that was taken on July 17. Okay? Thank you very much. So, that will bring us to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing item, and it is to pertaining to an ordinance of the city council, the Town of Atherton, ordering a submission to qualify the electors of the Town of Atherton, measures relating to, number one, the parcel tax renewal for additional four years, and number two, the increasing of the appropriations limit to permit the spending of the proceeds. So, city manager, do you want to?
Sure. You are hearing this anew. You have some additional information, including with item number one, the history of the parcel tax and the different parcel categories and tax rates. It's recommended that the council conduct a public hearing and adopt the ordinance, an ordinance of the Town of Atherton calling election to submit to the voters, one, an ordinance authorizing the renewal of the parcel tax for an additional four years, and an ordinance increasing the appropriations limit for the same period. That concludes the staff report.
Any member of the council have a question, a technical question for staff at this time? I do.
Well, if I could, and I don't have the document clear in front of me.
Okay.
This resolution, is it going to be the combined with all the assessment as well as the spending authorization?
Yes, sir. In fact, that was going to be one of my questions. It's an ordinance. It's not a resolution. It's an ordinance, I was corrected. But it, there is a section four, and you hit Councilmember Widmer on what I was going to ask city attorney in section four because of this ordinance, proposed ordinance that's in our packet, condensed statement of measures, and there are two boxes from which to vote, yes and no, yes and no. The first one being to continue to provide funding to maintain the parcel tax, and then the second one is to permit the spending by increasing appropriations limit. My question to city attorney is, could we incorporate both of those questions into one box so that the voters only have to mark one, yes or no?
Sure, sure. There's no reason you can't. In fact, I think it used to be done that way.
Yeah. Does that make sense, Mr. Widmer?
Yeah, I think if it is, it does. That's fine.
Okay. So, that would make, I think, it simpler because if they have an opportunity to vote two times, they might vote yes on one and no on the other, and then our appropriations limit doesn't pass, which we had the problem when we did the measures S and T last time. We had to really work hard at making the residents understand that measure T had to pass along with measure S in order to be able to use measure S funding. So, we can, we can do that and modify that in the ordinance?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we can.
So, that was my technical question. Do I have any member of the public wish to speak on this before we deliberate? Okay. So, council, any council comments about this?
No.
Okay, fair. So, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance as proposed in our packet with the modification to incorporate both questions into one voting box and use option A, tax rate table. Do I have a second?
I'll second. And that is the existing tax rate.
That is the current existing tax rate. So, I have a motion and a second. Do I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Widmer votes yes?
I vote yes, then.
Thank you. And no opposed. So, that motion passes. So, it appears that we will put on the November 5th ballot the renewal of our existing current-rate parcel tax measure to the residents for a vote incorporating both the appropriations increased limit as well as the renewal for four years, November 5th, 2013.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, you may.
I just answered Peter's question. Last year, we did not need the parcel tax information for the street. We actually paid the place out of the property tax. So, you know, we can do that again.
And let me just make a statement that our council here has the charge, I believe, to start January 14th, after we pass the parcel tax, after we get another council member on board, and then November election, to put as our priority on our list in January, February, March, to start looking at all of our revenue sources, all ways of increasing our revenue, and maybe modifying our parcel tax rate, maybe replacing the parcel tax with another revenue, but take this four-year period that we're hopefully going to be given by the residents with a two-thirds vote. They're going to have to vote two-thirds majority to renew this parcel tax, but we will take the next four years to do the public outreach, to do the public education, to do the analysis, and to do the due diligence so that we can bring everybody along and make the right decision.
I would just like to make another comment. You know, at the moment, we're running more or less at a break-even, break-even time, which is good ever since we have the layoffs.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we're doing everything that we should be doing. There's a whole lot of things that we should be doing. So, when people say, "Why do you need more money?" And some people certainly said that to me. My answer is, boy, I could make a whole list of things that would be wonderful for Atherton if we had more money. And so, I think that looking at new revenue sources, some of which I've been talking about for years, like a road and bike fee, for instance, and possibly if we change to a travel city to a real estate transfer tax, these things that bring in money, that would be money that would be very, very well-used in Atherton and would be continued to keep this town a beautiful town.
Any other comments from council members at this time?
No.
Mr. Widmer, do you have any other council comments before we move on to the consent agenda?
No, I just figured, going on, I think it was Mr. Dobby's comment, but I think that, and as you said, Madam Mayor, we need to, we need to start early and continue the, our drive towards looking at revenue sources, and also to focus on cost containment and looking at paying down our long-term revenue, our long-term liabilities, as well as making sure we have enough money to fund all the capital programs that the residents deserve and what they say they need. So, I think that this is a good step forward. Whether or not we need to continue the parcel tax in the future, you know, in four years we'll have to make that decision, but hopefully we'll, we'll find other sources and be ultra-conservative, so I appreciate that. And if, if it's okay with you, then I've looked over the fee schedule, and I'm more than happy to look over the minutes for this, and I'd like to ask your indulgence if I would, you know, drop the meeting.
Yes, sir. Except for one more little quick thing, can we go and get a motion to approve the consent items? There's items number three, and item number four. Item number three is the ballot argument, and item number four is the library needs assessment funding. Okay? And so, if I can get a motion, would you?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, wait a minute. The city attorney has raised his hand and told me that I have to open the floor for public comment for the consent items, if anyone wants to pull or have a question on those two consent items. Mr. Carpenter?
I'd just like to reiterate on the ballot language issue.
Yes.
That if police services is really our most important thing, that should be funded from property taxes. And what we should be arguing in the fact that we need more money, we need it for other things. We can't need it for our most important thing and not fund it out of the base budget.
Okay. Thank you. Bring it back to council. May I call for a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Mr. Dobby made the motion. Mr. Wees made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't.
Oh, good. Okay. So, that motion passes, and thank you for your comment, Mr. Carpenter, and we will look at that next year, next time around. Okay? Thank you. So, Bill, goodbye.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much. I look forward to it. I'll get to you when I get home. I assume that we don't need to, Madam Mayor, and I guess, George, do we need to revise the ballot pro statement that the mayor and I put together for this combined act, you know, of the tax and streaming it? Or is it what we have, okay?
I think the mayor's indicating what you have is fine.
Yeah.
All right, Bill. Don't get washed away out of there, wherever you are.
It's a cause.
Okay. Well, we're just kind of closing business. Hi, thank you very much, and I'm sorry I wasn't there to join you, but I appreciate you dialing me in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Bye. Thank you. Okay. Well, that was good. There's been a lot more fun Skyped, though.
On the big screen.
He's sitting there in his underwear or something.
No, no, he's negotiating.
He's in the lobby.
He's in the lobby.
That's what he says.
Yeah. Okay. So, our next, our next two items are our study session items, and this, this is a very informal way, that's why we're in roundtable kind of a format, so that we will get more information on these two items and be able to ask staff questions and have more of a frequent exchange of ideas and comments. We will not be having to take any action on any, on these two items. That will come later. So, it's time for us to take a look at that. So, the first one is the review and discussion of our draft revised Masterfee Schedule and our updated cost allocation plan, and our finance director, Robert Behren III, is going to give us the staff report on that. We have our consultant. Again, thank you for coming back. I really appreciate that, to talk to us about our Masterfee and cost allocation. Okay? Robert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the public. Yes, again, we're here today. Back in June, we reviewed our Masterfee, user fee study that was performed by Capo County Partners regarding our costs, indirect cost allocation, our user fees, and our hourly rates, all components. And so, we're here today to kind of have a question and answer regarding that and have some discussion with staff and the consultant. The consultant will briefly, in a few moments, go over a presentation to discuss what we did with the study and how we came about with some of our fees in doing the study. The Masterfee Schedule includes all the fees that are charged by all the town departments. Fees are often set at full cost recovery. If fees are not consistently updated, they may result in greater reliance of general tax dollars to support various services. Identifying cost components providing services is important in establishing these fees and the cost recovery rates. Therefore, that is why we passed and embarked on the indirect cost allocation study and a user fee study to give us our costs for providing these services. Local government is, is authorized to collect fees based on cost recovery of services provided as if these full cost recovery. Services can be subsidized by the town's general fund or other funding sources. Full cost recovery is usually set to recover costs of services from those that receive a private individual benefit. There are certain services that are community-wide where the use of general purpose revenue is also, is appropriate. However, most governments provide special benefit services where the user fees are, where user fees can be established appropriately for such services where the direct benefit is a special individual or group. You know, and most of these services are directly tied to regulated activities such as development review and building permits, code enforcement, and in these instances, cost recovery for an applicant for the need of the service is appropriate. So, with that being said, a practice is, there's a general practice of selecting appropriate cost recovery target to, for recovering our fees, and one practice is setting a target to, is considering the public and private benefits of such services. And that's what we want to kind of look out in as we set up a recovery cost target. Currently, the town does not have a cover, a cost recovery policy for any category of fees. The user fee study provides us with that cost of each service that we deliver. The study reveals the full cost to provide that service. Most agencies seek to, seek to recover full cost of your services. Some services can recover up to 70% or a percentage of that fee of providing that service. And it's important to note that private benefit services, such as those that provide private benefit to a property owner and rely on staff time and expertise, that typically at least set those at close to 100% of recovery cost. And also, agencies also do follow policies that do not charge for full cost recovery, but those are usually set for compliance based on level of demand and also based on the public-private benefit of that service. That being said, Mr. Danes would go over the PowerPoint presentation on our fee study. Attached in the staff report is also our current fees, the fees for that cost of service, the cost to provide that level of service, our current fees, and staff's recommended fees. Majority of the fees in the cost of user fee study are at 100% cost recovery. Again, we do not have a cost recovery policy, but through this study session and discussion dialogue, we can go forward in setting that policy.
Okay. Good. Any... All right. So, thank you, Robert, and we'll, can I just open it up to the public if there, anybody has any specific questions that they want to ask about this process, about what we're doing here, or before Dean goes through his presentation? Okay? Good. Any council members? You're okay with that?
No.
All right. Good. We did get a, I should say that we did receive a letter in the public comment portion from a resident, Carol Flaherty. She has spoken to council in the past on this issue, and she presented city manager and the council with a letter that will go into the public record. It's quite lengthy.
No.
Right? So, I'm not going to read it.
No.
Okay, fine. All right.
Check them light.
Um...
You guys are, they're pretty okay.
I don't...
I think we're okay. I think we're fine.
I think we're, okay. So, Daniel, would you like to?
Sure.
Go forward?
Sure.
We have copies of your PowerPoint, right?
It's my hobby. Robert, do you have copies of PowerPoint?
These. It notes.
I'm actually trying.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then I'll...
Madam Mayor, again, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be back. I do enjoy your lovely town. It is a beautiful community, and I think this is a lovely place to work. I do want to be quite informal with this. I think we get a lot more mileage out of this kind of presentation if we can be more conversational, so please feel free to interrupt me at any time. I'm going to go through these slides in a presentation format at the end of each one. I will ask for questions, but anytime, please, please feel free to jump in with a question or concern. This project, there's really three pieces to it. One was preparing full-cost indirect cost allocation plan. The use of a full-cost indirect cost allocation plan is really to establish the full cost of town services. In this particular application, it's to establish or to calculate the full cost of user fees. But the same with the modifications, the same plan can be used to assess admin overhead if a town were administering a grant for the federal government, state government, county government. So, there's a lot of uses for a full-cost indirect cost allocation plan, more than just the use to calculate the full cost of city services. Now, the, the second part of this was to calculate fully loaded productive valley rates, which are dependent upon the first piece of the project, which was the indirect cost allocation plan. You can't fully account for full city cost in hourly rates for staff and contract staff unless we know what those indirect rates are, indirect costs are. And then obviously, calculate the full cost of user fees. A piece of that was a comparison survey with local benchmark communities, and I'll address this again later, but the benchmark communities were picked because they reflect as much as possible the values of the Town of Atherton, the social-economic values of the town, as well as construction types of buildings that are being construction, constructed, even to some extent, things like, you know, is the town built on flat? Are there slopes or that sort of thing? Any question about the purpose of these three pieces of the project? Okay? Here and now? Let me go, spend a little bit more time on the cost allocation plan itself. As I mentioned, the indirect cost allocation plan allocates the cost of overhead functions based on a consumption model. Now, this is different than what you often see in a typical corporate financial model, which often just says, "Well, we have a million dollars of overhead, and let's just spread that out across all of the functions within the organization." In this case, and it's very important to note, that the methodology that we use is not only approved, but it's really designed by the Office of Federal, Federal Office of Management and Budget. This means that you, in fact, could use it if you were to assign overhead cost to a federal grant that you were administering. They would want to see a copy of your cost allocation plan, and they would want to know that it, the preparation of that plan complies with their methodology, and we did the plan based on that methodology. And again, the purpose of the plan really is to calculate overhead cost for city staff as well as the services. Now, I talk about a consumption model... Now, I talk about a consumption model, another way of describing that is a driver-based model. So what we're looking for is what drives the cost of town overhead to the various work units. So here's payroll as an example. What we're saying is the number of checks that are written really represents the, a level of effort and energy on the, on the part of the town to provide that function. And we're more or less saying that one payroll check is like another payroll check. That just because one person gets paid more than another, that means it doesn't drive the cost of delivering that service. It's the number of checks that drives the cost of that service. Same thing with banking. What we're saying here is that the, on average, on balance, the expenditures per department is what drives the cost of the banking function. Same thing with maintaining the town facilities. We're saying that there's a relationship between the total cost that each department consumes with the cost of maintaining the town facilities. If one, one town function has a cost that's twice what another department has, we assume therefore that they should pay probably twice as much for that function of maintaining the town facilities. Often, we will use an allocation model that says, well, maintaining town facilities is really driven by the square footage consumption of each department. Lacking that kind of data, sometimes that data is available, sometimes it's not. We, I don't really like to go out and tell your, you know, your maintenance people, go out with a tape measure and measure every desk and every chair and every office. That gets a little bit tedious. So the second option we would have would be, okay, there's probably a relationship between the total cost of the, of the department with maintaining the town facilities. Does that make sense? Matt Amer, is it?
I think so.
Makes sense? Okay, all right. I really like nodding heads, so.
Also, you know we're not...
Okay. I can see your head nodding a little bit, but I want to make sure. Okay. Productive hourly rates. Now, this is just an example. None of these numbers are real. Totally hypothetical. But this is a very important calculation for calculating the cost for a big town staff person. So we start out with their labor, we add to that their benefits. We also allocate out materials and supplies or non-personnel cost. We want to allocate any department overhead. We also want to allocate the town overhead and come up with the total cost of the town for maintaining, you know, that one individual person. We then also calculate the number of productive hours. And it's amazing to me how often this calculation is not made. I'm actually doing a project right now for Sacramento Transportation Authority. I'm reviewing their indirect cost rates that they're, that they're receiving on a contract. I'm absolutely amazed at the professional organizations that don't know how to do this simple calculation. But we start out with 2,080 hours. We subtract out vacation time, we subtract, subtract out sick leave, paid holiday time, daily work breaks, and any annual training, and we come up with a number of productive hours of 1,535, again, in this very hypothetical example. If I was looking at that number right there and I was, and this person, hypothetical person, was a town engineer, planning director, somebody with professional certifications, qualifications that hadn't been maintained, I would look at that 1,535 and I would say that's perfectly reasonable and normal, especially when you have a town where staff have been around for a while, they tend to get more vacation time than a town where, you know, they're hiring people right out of college. That number right there, I'm used to seeing anything from 1,400, even 1,300 on the low, maybe 1,600 on a high. Again, we're talking about people with professional degrees and certifications that have to maintain anything. Any question about this? This was actually pretty simple. What made this project a little bit more complicated was because...
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah?
So, I mean, in cost recovery, does that not include vacation and sick time and all these other things?
In my own opinion, it absolutely should.
It should.
Yeah, absolutely should. A lot of organizations somehow miss that or they ignore it.
Yeah.
And sometimes I find my, my job is to remind them that people do take vacation time, people do get sick at vacation. Now, the debatable point, a lot of organizations will debate that 96 hours of sick leave. They will say, well, people don't take their full 96 hours of sick leave. And my response is, it actually is a budgeted expense to the town. You essentially budget for that when you allow people to take 96 hours. The other thing, and I'm not sure what the policy here is, but people can accumulate that. Some towns, some communities will allow their staff to accumulate their sick leave.
If we were doing that, would we have to put specific numbers in for sick leave and, you know, vacations, because they're clearly different for different organizations?
Sure. On, on the vacation time, when I built the model to the best extent that I could, I actually used people's actual vacation time.
Okay, so we should do that, really?
Right.
We'll go back on with the...
Now, sick leave, sick leave is, everybody gets the same amount of sick leave, so...
Yeah, but everybody isn't being paid for it.
Well, and you've done this for each one of our employees.
Yes.
You've created this model for each one of our actual employees using real numbers going into it.
Not this model. I said, this was totally hypothetical. The numbers are totally... So you've included sick time? Yes. In your evaluation, okay? Not this... Not these numbers. Right.
No, the actual, the real number.
Now, sick time, because some organizations allow you to be paid if you don't take sick time.
Correct.
I think maybe some changes there.
We said that this was hypothetical.
And therefore, you know, sick time is taken.
So, well...
That's a cost, but it was not taken.
Must ask them what our average total in productive hours is.
And, and one of the, some organizations do that. What a lot of cities are starting to do, or at least I'm starting to see more of it all the time, is that they will just lump all of this into personal leave time and say, we don't care what you do. Vacation time, holiday time, sick leave time, do what you want to do. But to the best extent that we could, we actually use real numbers over people.
Daniel?
You may call me Dan.